I know that.
Well, we're forgetting.
I feel like this one branch is dangling right in my head, so I keep trying to position myself between the branches.
Once Mariah is done putting us on UGGV and I'll be able to let the other participants in, but right now I can't. So it'll be a couple of minutes. Mayor, I don't see any other commissioners waiting as an attending, so.
Do we have the YouTube? We go ahead and roll, Doug.
I believe we are ready, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Good afternoon. Before I call the meeting order, I want to announce that due to COVID-19, we have individuals attending by way of conference call. All participants joining by phone should mute their phones when not speaking to avoid background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak, so the public that is participating knows who is speaking. This is critical, given the number of remote participants and is Kansas Attorney General. Now call the meeting to order. Thank everyone for being here tonight. I'd ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call the roll.
A special session is being held on Thursday, May 28, 2020, at 5:00 PM for a COVID-19 update and presentations regarding a safe and welcoming municipal ID ordinance. Public input is welcome during any time remaining. Roll call. Walters.
Here.
Philbrook.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Burrows.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
McCarronan.
Here.
Ramirez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Hain.
Here.
Markley.
Here.
Alvy.
Here. Thank you for the update. I'm sorry. Thank you for that. We're now going to go to the COVID-19 update. Mr. Bach?
Thank you, Mayor. As we've been doing over the previous weeks before we move into the other part of our special sessions, we're giving the Health Department a few minutes to talk about a few of the things that are hot or most active within this week. So with that, I will go to Julian Ben-Lu, our Department Director of Health Department. Julian? Julian, are you guys ready to roll on the Health Department?
I'm so sorry. Technical glitch. We are here. Thanks for hanging with us. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to your weekly COVID update. We'll be pretty brief this evening. We're going to give you a data update again and then talk about Phase 2.0. Really quickly, though, before we dive in, I want to introduce Nicole Garner, who is our new full-time COVID-19 Project Manager in the Health Department.
Good afternoon or evening, everyone. I'm so happy to be here again, Nicole Garner, and I'm happy to be here today.
So you all approved a couple of weeks ago some significant funds to come to the Health Department to help support our COVID response. And part of that is going to having Nicole for the next year, which really helps just increase the capacity among the doctors and I in an administrative standpoint for COVID. So we appreciate that, and you'll all hear more from her in coming weeks. A quick data update on where we are in terms of cases. You'll notice that we have transitioned from 14-day rolling averages to seven-day rolling averages. And this is because we are trying to make kind of short-term decisions now. Every couple of weeks, we're considering whether or not to move to the next phase or zone in terms of reopening. And so we're looking at a little bit shorter timeframe, so we can make sure we're really following the trends as they go up and down in a shorter time period. So we continue to see stabilization, which is great, across our cases for the last seven-day averages. We're sitting between 10 and 15 cases a day, down from near 40 a couple of weeks ago, so it continues to look positive. Same situation for deaths. We did have a death over the weekend, but beyond that, we're sitting pretty stable. And in terms of percent positivity, so this is on any given day, the percent of the tests that are done in our county, which percent of those come back positive, we're also looking very good here. One note I'll make is that we put this slide together yesterday, and then we just found out that we had 35 new cases from Tuesday, which was almost a 50% positivity rate. So we'll have a little spike yesterday when we update this graph next. So we're keeping our eye on that very closely to make sure that's not a new trend that's going to be picking up. Another thing to note is that if there is a surge or an uptick in cases that came out of Memorial Day weekend, we won't see that until probably early next week. So people tend to experience symptoms four or five days past exposure, and then they'll turn around maybe within a day or two to get tested, and then another day or two for us to get the results. So we'll really be paying attention early to midweek next week to see what came out of Memorial Day weekend, if anything. And I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Griner, who's going to give a brief update on the race and ethnicity breakdown.
I'm going to wear my mask. I know we don't have much time, but I'm trying to prove that you can wear your mask over your nose and your mouth and not touch it for six to eight hours at a time. My new pet peeve since I've been working at the hospital this week. Just to throw that in there. Okay, so we're very interested, as you all know, of following the data on racial and ethnic parameters of this pandemic. I'm actually doing a regional talk on a webinar tomorrow, and some of you may have seen that, that we're going to do virtually out of the local Division of Health and Human Service Office here in Kansas City with some of this data, so you might see it again if you're on air. We've had a real change with all of the positive cases in terms of a large number of really what we believe is mostly our refugee and immigrant community, many of whom work at Triumph Foods in St. Joseph's or work as well at Casey State Company, where we visited last week. So on our cases per 100,000, they're far and above the highest number now, although we are not seeing that really reflect into what we're seeing in terms of hospitalization numbers or death numbers. So that's something we'll continue to watch closely. It's really something we're kind of seeing mirrored across the United States. It may have to do with the age distribution of that population or other amounts of comorbid chronic disease that are present in that population, but we're just not seeing them hospitalized. We are very pleased, though, that that group has come and sought out testing and high numbers. And so I don't think we have one on the positivity rate, but the positivity rate, I believe, is like 40 or 50%. So of those that we test who declare that their race is Asian, almost 50% of them have been coming back positive in the last couple of weeks, so that's something we'll be watching closely. You can also see on the graph on the right that Hispanic ethnicity has a much higher rate than non-Hispanic. That has to do with some of those same clusters that we're seeing in some of those workplaces as well. And again, we're not seeing the high rates of hospitalization or death in those groups. Here shows a little bit more of this. So on the left side, you see race-specific deaths. We're still seeing more of that in our African-American population. We have a very small number of American Indian and Alaskan natives. That in some ways skews this rate. I don't have the exact number, but I don't think this is more than a handful of cases there. So we're not sure what the real significance is, although we are. Some of you may have seen in the press that around the nation, we're seeing really significant impacts in American Indian communities, so that's something to watch. And then you can see again in the Hispanic ethnicity group, we're not seeing very many deaths at all. So the rate is very, very low, and most of the deaths are happening in non-Hispanics. Testing, again, we mentioned that the testing rates have been high in recent weeks in our Asia group and relatively high in our Hispanic group on the right, although not quite as high as the non-Hispanic group. We feel like we actually have a close-to-decent distribution of race-specific testing rates compared to what our demographics are based on census data for the county. So I think all the work we've been doing to stretch out across the community, and I know we still haven't reached every segment of the county or worked with every group that we want to work with, and we're continuing to work on that. And in fact, Nicole just got off a call working on that issue, so we're glad she's here to help us with that. But I think if you compared us to a lot of other counties, we're probably doing a lot better reaching the demographic that we want to reach with our testing. And then ethnicity, you can see again, it's a little lower, but relatively good there. And then percent positivity, I mentioned before, the high numbers in the Asian group. Still relatively high numbers across the board, although I think you presented the moving average numbers. We're seeing this, we've really seen this go down in terms of the percent positive tests overall, mostly in the last week to two weeks. The reason these numbers still look relatively high on your left is just because if you look out over the whole last eight to 10 weeks, we had a lot of time in there where we had really high positivity rates of testing. So that's an issue. And you can see over here on the right, it's still very high in our Hispanic ethnicity group. So we hope that these things, they should trend down based on what we're seeing with the rolling average graph, but we've got to work hard to make sure that we don't have more outbreaks that cause us to continue to be a problem. Because as you remember from our prior meetings, we have to see this positivity rate of test positives go down, so that even if we're seeing more total cases go up, which we might as we do more testing, if less of our total that are tested are positive, that's a really good thing. Okay, so now I will turn it over to Dr. Corvo, just a few items.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I will wear my mask as well tonight. Dr. Corvo, the Deputy Health Officer. As you all know, the governor this week rescinded her order regarding her Phase 2 order. And at that time, we in Wyandotte County had already issued our order for the AdAstra Plan Phase 2. So we were able to just remain A-OK with the order that had already been issued here out of Wyandotte County. We, as a team here, have met and thought through this quite a bit, and we feel that that was the right thing to do for consistency in our county. We're very concerned about surrounding counties and how and when they will be moving, relaxing their regulations, whether that be an order or rather just issuing guidance instead of an order. We still plan to be evaluating the data very carefully up until June 8. We want to make sure that we have two weeks past the Memorial Day holiday in order to take into account all of those get-togethers that were happening. And so we will follow the data very carefully there. As you all know, in the AdAstra Phase 2 Plan, we are allowing mass gatherings up to 15 people at a time. Salons and personal services have opened, as well as fitness centers, casinos, and organized sports can happen. Our swimming pools, however, are still closed. Many of our summer festivals, at this point at least, are not allowed. That may change as we relax. And then bars and nightclubs are still closed as well. I just want to remind everyone again of the goals that we had set out initially, and that is with these orders, we're trying to ensure for our community that we have a healthcare system that has surge capacity, that we have a public health workforce that is sufficient to monitor and respond to the disease, and that we're protecting the most vulnerable people in our community, those who are elderly and have pre-existing conditions. And I just wanted to add too that we here have been thinking a lot about the use of our power in public health and really being strong leaders for the Wyandotte County community. We certainly do not want to use our powers to be politically divisive, and we don't also feel that it's right at this time to abdicate powers to individuals, per se. And the reason is, is because we want to ensure conditions for all people to be healthy in Wyandotte County. And so we are balancing that with individual rights and autonomy, of course. So we're striving to work in really ethical ways here, I think, and striving to, again, ensure protection for the people who need it the most, and we appreciate your support in all of that. And at this time, I'll turn it over for questions. Thank you.
Trying to find.
Smartphone disconnected.
There is a question from Commissioner Townsend.
Commissioner Townsend? Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks again to the Health Department, all the employees there for what they're doing under the circumstances. I had a question related to Dr. Griner's slide that showed the number of African-Americans who have died from this disease. On our COVID website, I've noticed in the last three weeks and have been surprised by the number or the mean, sorry, the median age of positive cases in the ZIP codes that are in or directly connected to District 1. For instance, in ZIP Code 101, as of last night, the median age of people getting the disease was 30 years old. In 102, median age showed 30, and in 104, median age showed 35. But I'm wondering what the median age is for those persons, and I'll just use the chart, who are actually comprising, unfortunately, that number of deaths. From what I'm seeing in the community, and I'm hoping this will change, a lot of people in that age demographic are not wearing masks, are not doing the appropriate distancing, and this is very disconcerting. And I believe they think that only if you're old, you can get it. So do you have any stats on the median ages of those persons, unfortunately, who have perished, either in total or the African-American chart to show?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Townsend. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I think generally, and these guys will chime in as well, I think we're seeing that that those that die from COVID, really across all groups, although there is some difference in death rates across the different groups, depending to be in that 60 to 65-year-old range. If you look nationally, though, it really is a linear correlation between age and likelihood of death for those that get this virus. So there's definitely something there. But then in terms of incidence, number of cases, definitely we're seeing more cases in working-age adults, you know, in that range from 18 to, say, 45 to 55. Those are the segments that are getting it by far and by great. Now, I don't know that if that relates as much to how much they're protecting themselves as to how many of those people probably are paid an expensive job. I mean, in situations where they probably weren't staying at home because they had jobs.
Dr. Griner, you're cutting out quite a bit. We're losing a good portion of what you're saying.
Okay, sorry, Mayor. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Just to summarize again, we're seeing the deaths in older folks. We're seeing the higher incidence in those middle-aged, young working adults, but not as many deaths in that group. We still have, I think we still have a lot to learn in terms of why all this is occurring, the way it's occurring. But I think we are encouraged that definitely we've made progress in reducing the numbers of deaths. In terms of the wearing of face masks and the behavior change, I think that's something we know we all have to keep working on. The Communications Team at Allen House is working on a set of videos right now with some folks from different community segments. We hope that can be something we can push out. We're open to suggestions and other ideas on ways to get people motivated to change what they're doing.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation, and I see no more hands raised. So let's move on now to our next presentation. This is regards the municipal ID Safe and Welcoming Ordinance. There will be two parts to this presentation. The first is regarding municipal ID itself, just general information, what a municipal ID does do, what it does not do, how it is administered in other municipalities, some idea of projected costs, and so forth. After that initial piece of the presentation on the municipal ID itself, there will be time for commission questions and comments. We will then follow up with the second part, which will be an examination of the language of a suggested safe and welcoming ordinance, what that language of that suggested ordinance would permit or prohibit our police and sheriff's departments to do in relation to Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE. The second part also explores ramifications that this suggested language would have on other UG operations. And again, after that presentation, there will be time for commission questions and comments. And after that, there will follow with a presentation by an advocate for the Safe and Welcoming Ordinance. With the time remaining, we will hear public input. Again, this is not a public hearing. There is no vote tonight. This is just an examination, exploration of this language and of this ordinance. It is not a proposal. So what we will be doing is, though, accepting public input to this, there will be a limit. So if you are listening in for this, we do allow three minutes, but if you want to allow others to speak, shorten your comments. If you find yourself, think you're going to be repeating what others have already said, then defer to someone else who may have something unique to offer, something new to offer, because we will adjourn this session at 6:50 in preparation for our regular session at 7:00. So having said that, I will now pass this on to Administrator Bach.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe you've done an excellent job in setting up what we're doing this evening for presentation. So I will just go ahead and introduce our speakers. As the mayor noted, the first part is really our research section that we went into and studied about how these work and how they can work. This will be given by Claudia O'Connell at the conclusion of her section. As the mayor noted, we'll take questions from there, and then we will move into more information regarding an actual ordinance, which will be presented by Ken Moore. So with that, I will turn this over to Ms. O'Connell and let her off for the presentation.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for that introduction, Mayor Alvy, Administrator Bach. Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, my name is Claudia O'Connell, former intern in the County Admin's Office, and tonight we're going to be discussing the municipal ID. So what is, municipal ID is a form of photo ID issued by a city or county government, third-party or nonprofit agency, but for the purposes of this presentation, we will be focusing on city and third-party administered programs. Some potential benefits of the ID is that it can prove an individual's identity and residency. It has the potential to improve community safety. It could possibly improve access to financial services, and it could increase access to healthcare. These are some of the groups that may find it difficult to obtain a photo ID. So undocumented immigrants, foster youth after they've aged out of the foster care system at age 18, low-income elderly, homeless individuals, and then lastly, formerly incarcerated individuals. So public safety was the main driver of many of these programs throughout the country. Enlisted are some of the public safety benefits, so ease of reporting criminal activity. Individuals may be more likely to come forward and report a crime if they have an ID, and then identifying victims of criminal activity as well as traffic stops. So all of these help officers in their day-to-day duties by being able to confirm one's identity. And then these are just some quick facts. Like I said, improvement of public safety was one of the main goals of these programs. There are approximately 40 communities across the country that have these, and there are not currently any municipal ID programs in the state of Kansas or Missouri. So this slide just kind of gives you an idea of how many programs are dispersed throughout the states. And the closest adjacent states to Kansas that have programs are in Iowa, Arkansas, and then Colorado. So municipal ID would only be valid in Kansas City, Kansas. Therefore, it could not be used as a driver's license. It would not grant you access into a federal building. It would not allow someone to board a plane. You couldn't use it to purchase alcohol or tobacco products. And finally, it's not accepted by state or federal agencies to prove identity. So again, it's only valid within the city limits of Kansas City, Kansas. So the following slides show documentation is required for both a US citizen and a non-US citizen to receive a Kansas driver's license or a non-driver's ID card. So first, you have to prove identity, and these are some of the documents that a US citizen would have to bring in to prove their identity to receive a Kansas driver's license, and you have to provide one of these. And then this list, you also have to provide residence or prove residency. So any two of these documents would prove your residency, and it would also establish Kansas residency as well as your residential address.
Claudia?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think if you, again, I know I was encouraging us to move through this so that people could have more opportunities to speak, but I think we could slow down a little bit so we can actually read that.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. That was mine.
I'll slow down.
Her-directed that.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, so backtracking, so this is the list of documents that are required for a Kansas driver's license. So if you provide one of these, you would fulfill that requirement. And then you also have proof residency, so any two of these documents would do so. And then for a non-US citizen, you have to provide all applicable documents that apply to your particular situation. So any one of these or whatever applies to your current situation. All of these documents show date of birth, identity, and lawful status or presence as a non-US citizen. And then again, you have to prove residency, and this is the same list as the same list of documents required for a US citizen applying for a Kansas driver's license or a non-driver's ID. And now we're going to look at two different models of implementation. So first, we're going to look at a community with a city-issued program and then a community with a third-party administered program. So first, we're going to start with the city-issued program. In this table, you can see various differences between communities and how they run on their programs. So you know where the program is housed, the cost per card. And at the bottom, you can see the year-one estimated cost, and we'll discuss that a little bit later on in the presentation. So now we're going to take a closer look at Little Rock, Arkansas. So qualifications for an ID card in Little Rock, you have to be a resident, oh yes Mayor?
Yeah, I think, go back. Go back again, one more time. Yeah, so just again, that's quite a bit for people to absorb. Let's go ahead, go to the next one. And just give Commission a chance to read those and compare some of those. Yes.
Sorry about that. Alrighty, so qualifications for an ID card in Little Rock, you have to be a resident, fourteen years, you must be fourteen years of age or older. And then you also must provide proof of identity and residency. So this is a two-tiered process. And again, this is a list of documents that prove one's identity. And you have, this is the primary proof of identity. So if you provide one of these, then you fulfill that requirement.
Yep, take a little bit of time on this one.
And then this list is secondary proof of identity. So it's a little bit of a lesser strength than the previous slide, but you have to provide two of these documents. And then finally, tertiary proof of identity. So if you have neither on the previous two lists, then you could provide, have the option to provide three of these. Okay, so then we move on to providing residency. And you can provide any two of these documents to do so.
Thank you.
Okay, and then same here, you can provide any two of these.
Thank you.
Okay, and then this is the last slide, any two of these documents to prove residency. So this is an example of what the municipal ID looks like in Little Rock. You can see the various information on the card. This card is valid for three years from the date of issuance. And if the individual moves out of the city, the card is considered null and void. The cardholder must notify the city within ten days of the move, and then the city will remove their information from their system. The fee is $10 for adults and $7 for those other listed groups. So a little bit about the issuance process. So the first step would be that the applicant must schedule an appointment via the city's website. At the appointment, all of the information and documentation is reviewed by the Office of the Multicultural Liaison, and all of the documentation must be submitted at the time of request. If it's not, the applicant must leave and then reschedule another appointment via the city's website, and then come back to City Hall and do the process all over again. And once the required documentation is approved, the card is issued at the appointment. Cards are not mailed to the individual. So document retention and database storage. The Multicultural Liaison does not keep any copies used to prove identity or residency. But the information that they do keep is all printed on the card except the residential address, and they keep that information for three years. And then if the card is not renewed, that information is purged from the database. So confidentiality will be protected to the extent allowable by federal and state law. And records may be subject to the Arkansas Freedom of Information Act, which would apply to the unified government under Kansas State statute. So there's just some staffing and beginning expectations from the city of Little Rock. They have two full-time employees running this program. So the Multicultural Liaison, who is an attorney, and then one administrative assistant. The liaison is the only person who is able to issue the cards. And the city mainly did this to reduce liability. And both of those two employees are bilingual. So beginning expectations of the program. There were roughly three hundred applicants in the first month, so it would be wise to expect a large influx in the beginning. There were around fifteen hundred cards issued in the first year, which equals about $15,000 in annual revenue based on the price per card. And just logistically, in the beginning, many of individuals don't bring in proper documentation at the first appointment. So this does slow down the issuance process and creates a backlog. So it would just be something to consider if we were to implement a program such as theirs. So then now we're going to take a look at a third-party administered program. So both communities on this table are administered by the same company, so they have a lot of similar characteristics. And then you'll note at the bottom that the estimated cost is no cost to either city, and we will discuss that. So we're going to take a little bit closer look at Richmond, California's program. So the third-party administrator in Richmond is a company called SF Global. As the administrator, SF Global provides customer service and support. They train all city and county departments on how to verify authenticity of the cards. They manage and operate the program at its own cost. And then they reimburse the city for oversight and administrative hours worked by city staff. So in order to be eligible for one of these cards, you have to prove that you've been a resident in Richmond for fifteen of the previous thirty days. If you're a minor, you can have a parent or guardian submit an application on their behalf. And also, you have to prove identity and residency within the city. So again, their list here is a list of the primary proofs of identity. And you just have to provide one of these. And then here's a list of secondary proofs of identities. Two of these are required. And then you must also prove residency, so you have to provide one of these documents. And again, must provide one of these. Okay, so a little bit about the cost recovery and some card specifics. So like I said, SF Global operates the program at their own cost, including the facilities and staff cost, all materials, staff training and hiring, and computer and telephone equipment and services. And the card itself, as well as being an ID, it also has a debit card component. But this is an optional feature. And if you choose to activate the debit card, the user will be subject to multiple user fees. And just like in Little Rock, if you move out of the city of Richmond, the card is considered null and void. So these are some of the functions of the debit card. So you can make cash withdrawals, make purchases online and over the phone, just like a normal debit card. And then this is an example of what the card looks like. So you can see the various security features. So database storage and security standards. SF Global works with the local bank for all of its financial services, which does include maintaining all applicant information, including the applicant's residential address. This information is subject to all applicable federal and state laws relating to any of the listed crimes. And in addition to this, the Richmond Police Department may be granted access to a cardholder's information if they come across a card they believe to be fraudulent or connected to a crime. So now we're going to take a quick look at implementation in Kansas City, Kansas. So this table shows you a list of services that either require, and this is just a few services, obviously not all of them, but a few services that require a photo ID and ones that don't. So the top half of the table shows you some of the services that don't require a photo ID, and the bottom half shows you ones that do require some form of photo ID, but a foreign ID is accepted. And then moving to the question of whether or not a bank would accept a municipal ID as a form of identification, the answer to that is maybe. It just depends on each individual bank and how much risk they're willing to take on. Through our research, we found that many banks across the country will accept the cards as a secondary form of ID. And the reason for this is that banks must comply with a rule called the CIP rule, which basically provides the appropriate flexibility to banks on what forms of ID they feel comfortable accepting. So again, it's just risk banks, and it's just from bank to bank. And then finally, estimated cost. And this would be the estimated cost of a city-administered program. And we got these estimates from city of Little Rock. So equipment costs, all those items are roughly around $36,000. Two years of tech support, around $5,000, two full-time staff, an estimated $147,000 including benefits, and then document recognition training. So around $190,000 for just the first year total. And that is the end of that portion of the presentation, so I will take any questions.
Commissioner Bynum, you had had your hand up, and I know you lowered it, so I didn't know if you had a question, you wanted to follow up.
I do. I have a whole slew of questions, and some of them might be better suited for after we let some of our community folks talk. But right off the top of my head, just based on that presentation, I guess I would start with saying that based on those cost estimates, if we were going to implement a municipal ID, it might be worth our effort to look into the private company that does it at no cost, given our current financial situation. I mean, you know, due to COVID-19, that's now sitting top of mind, I'm sure for everyone. But I would definitely not be in favor of a municipal ID that also could double as a debit card that has fees like what Claudia described attached, because that, I feel like the segments of our population that could make use of a municipal ID already find themselves in situations where they are the victims of predatory financial practices. And so the thought of a municipal ID that could also be a debit card that takes out more of my money every time I do a transaction is not palatable to me. And my last comment, again, I got a lot of questions, but the last one that pops in my mind as a result of those slides is, I do have a family doctor, and my mother, who would be a candidate for this ID, has had to go to the hospital through the emergency room. And in both of those instances, both she and I have produced a photo ID. So I noticed that the slide said medical clinic, no. But when I'm at my family physician, or in the instance when I've got to take my mother to the hospital, both of those situations did require a photo ID. I don't know what happens if you can't produce one. I've not been in that situation. So that's more of just a comment that maybe we could get clarification around. And with that, I'll stop for now. Thank you. Mayor, you're muted.
Commissioner Bynum, I would suggest that if you have questions, especially clarifications, that you might want to bring those now, because at the end, we'll be taking public input, and we may run out of time for that as it is.
Thank you. With that being said, the numerous questions that I've had... With that being said, the numerous questions that I've had throughout the more than one year that we've been discussing municipal ID among ourselves and with members of the community are questions such as a library card. I show a library card to get, I show a photo ID to get a library card. I didn't see that question answered. I don't know if our Kansas City, Kansas Community College or Donnelly College wants a photo ID for enrollment. I don't know if Kansas State University wants a photo ID for enrollment. So I still have that whole myriad of our partner institutions that we work with on a daily basis. And whether or not adopting a municipal ID would be satisfactory for those local institutions that we work with and that we work so hard to help our community residents access. So those are the kinds of questions that remain for me.
If I can answer the one question, yes, a photo ID is required for a library card. And our understanding is that their children are enrolled in schools and institutions without photo ID.
Kirk. Thank you, Mayor. I saw the checkmark on our public schools as a no, photo ID not required. But I still don't know if our KCK Public Library System or the Bonner Library is going to accept a municipal ID for a library card. And that may be minor to some people, but it's not minor in my family. And access to our library is critical. So that's an important question for me. I saw that public transit access is a no, and that answers that question for me. Obviously, voting would be, you know, another question I would have. And I would guess that our election commissioner is going to tell us that, no, you cannot show a municipal ID to register to vote. I'm taking a stab at that because I don't know the answer. So.
I think it would have to be an ID that would have proof of citizenship and residence.
I would agree.
Claudia, do you have any other information on that or answers to Commissioner's questions?
As far as the library goes, if the city is over the library, would we be able to change that rule? Or I don't know.
Our KCK Public Libraries are governed by our Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education.
Okay. Okay. I didn't know that.
And like the slide that you're showing us here where it's yes or no. And the question that we're answering is, do you need a photo ID? And the question I'm asking is, would a municipal ID be accepted?
I think that's something we would have to work with those groups on. It would just be on a case-by-case basis.
I think my overarching statement is this. I agree with so many people in our community that think a municipal ID would be an additional tool that could be helpful to, again, populations like my mother and other vulnerable populations. But it's hard for me, and I've said this repeatedly. It is difficult for me to support creating a new level of bureaucracy within our municipal government until I can be assured that creating such a bureaucracy actually helps fill some of the gaps where photo ID is needed. The banking was a big question for me. I see that the answer to that is yes, maybe. I suppose that answer is probably the same answer someone without proper photo ID would get right now. So, you know, I'm really looking for, and maybe I'll hear this when our community members speak, that I'm really looking for a level of confidence that if we adopt this measure, whether we operate it internally or outsource it to a private firm, that it's actually something that's helpful. So that's the struggle I'm having. So again, I'm hopeful to hear more good information as we, you know, hear from others that hope to speak. And I'll stop. Thank you.
Commissioner Philbrook?
Yes. So thank you, Commissioner Bynum, for mentioning all those things. My, I would like to emphasize that, yes, I would like to know who else specifically would get on board, what banks, what other organizations in our city would be willing to accept this ID before I would be willing to move forward on that. It's a very intriguing idea. And I understand what some of the advantages can be. But until we get commitment from other stakeholders, I would be reticent to move forward. The other thing is, is this is around children, children's IDs. And I noticed that, you know, they talk about kids over 15. Kids don't have most of those required documents. About the only thing I could see you being able to come up with is a school ID or an enrollment document and a birth certificate. And that would be about it. If you can think of other things that would prove, you know, for a children's ID, please let me know. But I thought that was kind of interesting. And I can definitely understand where children's ID would be necessary. But here's another question, back to the school district, District 500. We have children enrolled in District 500 that may not have any particular ID other than a school ID. Are those children allowed to get books out of the public, you know, library that's ran by District 500? And Mr. Alvey, you would probably, you might know that, but I sure don't. And like I said, I think it's very intriguing. But, and I appreciate this presentation because it makes it much more succinct. And I'm looking forward to hearing other comments and answers. Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. At the risk of keeping this as brief as possible, I have a lot of questions, too. Is there a place that I can send all these into? The other commissioners can see them and we get a response? Because I don't want to delay the presentation time. But I do have concerns because it seemed like in one of the slides, there was no circumstance where there wasn't some other form of information available. And I get, or acceptable. And guess what I'm getting is, I want to see what would be not only helpful, but necessary for us to pursue this. I'd also want to know legally, what, if anything, adopting this process would put us, if at all, with odds with the Patriot Act. You know, by October, those of us who even have driver's license have to have another decal added to, you know, go on an airplane or go to a federal facility if you don't carry around your passport with you. So I'd like to know where I can send in those specific questions and get this, get those answers. I don't care if it's public. I hope it will be. But don't want to delay the presentation any longer.
Yes, I think we would send those questions to the county administrator.
All right. Thank you.
And I would probably just add to that, if you just send them to Ally. She'll collect all the questions and then we will still discuss it with me. And we'll get it to the right person to get them all answered and put back for the team.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. See, no more questions regarding municipal ID. We'll now hear.
I'm sorry. It's Commissioner Bynum again. I would like to step back to the slide about utility services. And Claudia, I guess I'm asking you, did you, when we say we don't need an ID to set up a VPU account, is that, is that something we've confirmed with the VPU?
I believe I got that information from Gordon.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will just add that to my list of questions.
Yeah. And yeah, we can definitely verify, but.
It just makes me think of Kansas Gas, Spectrum, AT&amp;T, et cetera. So I will just add that to my list. Thank you.
Okay. We now move on to the next. Kenny?
Thank you, Mayor. This section is going to analyze the two components of the Safe and Welcoming Resolution. The first 13 sections address how the Sheriff's Office and the Police Department deal with people. And it has some terms that have been referred to as ICE non-compliance provisions. And then the next 17 sections of the resolution address proposed municipal ID program. And I want to thank the Sheriff's Department, the Sheriff's Office, the Police Department, and the sheriff and police legal advisors who have reviewed this and provided input and information in this presentation. So. So Section 1 of this portion of the ordinance, and I'm not going through all the whereas clause. I'm really just getting into substantive portions. It prohibits the use of any unified government resources to assist federal immigration enforcement. And also prohibits gathering or disseminating or transmitting information regarding immigration status of individuals in Winnetka County unless required by federal or state law. It prohibits conditioning service or benefits upon immigration status and prohibits inquiring as immigration status on any application, questionnaire, or interview form. Now, the current policy, to Greg's extent, follows this, but prohibiting the sharing of information would adversely impact police officers, sheriff deputies' ability to participate in a variety of inter-agency task forces, and many of which of those are federally funded. So currently, we have 15 police officers and one sheriff deputy assigned to a variety of federal task forces. And that's kind of a list of an example of those task forces. The financial impact of that is there are asset forfeiture. And some of those funds, a portion of those funds are turned back to the Kansas City, Kansas Police Department. So in four years, we've received $655,000 in federal asset forfeiture funds. Okay? Here's an example of just one of the task forces, US Marshals Task Force, Fugitive Task Force. You can see there's a variety of inter-agency partners, one of which is Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE. But in 2019, they closed over 2,500 cases, arrested 600, I'm sorry, arrested 164 gang members, seized 183 firearms, and seized a whole lot of narcotics. And obviously, this requires sharing information between our police officers and sheriff's department with those task force partners, one of which is ICE. It also has a potential impact on law enforcement grants. These are a list of some of the grants that we currently have or have pending. Part of applying for these grants is we certify that we are going to comply with various federal laws and regulations. And many of those laws and regulations require us to share data with different federal agencies or at least not to protect that kind of information. So these grants could be jeopardized to some extent or the other if we refuse to share that information with federal agencies. Okay, Section 2 just requires that the police department and sheriff's office not stop, question, or investigate, detain, or arrest an individual based solely on their immigration status or because of a civil immigration warrant or administrative warrant or detainer. Now, that is really current with our, consists with our current policies. We have state statutes which prohibit racial or other bias-based policing. The police department has general orders for fair and impartial policing and how they deal with undocumented persons. The KCK PD, they detain only on confirmed orders of removal issued by a judge. And the sheriff's department does not extend detention based on an ICE hold. So this will not have a great impact on our current operations. Paragraph 3 say that the police department or sheriff's office should not inquire about immigration status of an individual, including a crime victim, a witness, or a person who calls or approaches the police seeking assistance. In general, this is also in line with our current policies. The law enforcement does not inquire about immigration status when they come into contact with people. However, sometimes that inquiry is important in conducting criminal investigations. Future of apprehension is one of those examples. Paragraph 4 says that the police and sheriff will not perform the functions of federal immigration officer or otherwise engage in enforcement of federal immigration law, and that we not enter into agreements under this particular federal code. The police department and sheriff's office have policies governing, the general orders and operating procedures governing interaction with federal agencies and undocumented individuals. And the purpose of those is to encourage crime reporting in cooperation regards to status. So to that extent, that provision is consistent with our current practice. Also, our practice is not to enforce immigration laws. And we limit our contact situations independent of immigration enforcement. And the sheriff's deputies do not detain on a civil violation of immigration laws or related civil warrant. Now, Sections, Paragraphs 5, 6, and 7 require judicial warrant or court order before detaining or transferring a person for immigration enforcement or investigative purposes from releasing non-public information to ICE or Customs and Border Protection, CBP, or collecting or disclosing information regarding immigration or citizenship status. And again, this is generally consistent with our current practices and procedures. However, criminal investigation information is shared with other law enforcement agencies, both state, federal, and local, including ICE and Customs and Border Protection. Failure to share that information goes back to the earlier slide that could jeopardize our task force's participation and violate our Department of Justice grant certification requirements. Now, this one, Paragraph 8 says, "Nothing in this law shall be construed to prohibit or in any way restrict a local agency from sending to or receiving from ICE or CBP information regarding individual citizenship or immigration status for maintaining such information or for exchanging such information with any other local, state, or federal agency." Because this seems unclear because it seems to conflict with Paragraphs 1, 3, 6, and 7, which in one way or the other prohibit or limit the sharing of that information. So Sections, Paragraphs 9, 10, and 11 deal with individuals in the custody of the sheriff's department. It prohibits or restricts ICE or CBP from accessing such individual or from allowing the agent, or using agency facilities to question or interview such individual without a valid judicial warrant. It prohibits delaying the release for purposes of immigration enforcement and requires notifying the individual before complying with a request. And again, this generally is consistent with current practices and procedures regarding release of an inmate. But the police and the sheriff treat all local, state, and federal agencies who have jurisdiction similarly. And that would include ICE or CBP. And this, again, may conflict with our Department of Justice grant certification requirements. Uh, in, individuals in the custody of the police or sheriff shall be subject to the same booking, processing, release, and transfer procedures, policies, and practices of the agency regarding, regardless of actual or suspected citizenship or immigration status. Again, this is generally consistent with our current policies and practices, but it somewhat conflicts with Paragraph 11, which creates a special notification procedures for people suspected of immigration violations. And international federal law may require special notifications upon arrest of foreign nationals. Paragraph 13 prohibits the use of, of unified government money, property, equipment to investigate, enforce, or assist in the investigation enforcement of any federal program requiring the registration of individuals on the basis of race, gender, sexual orientation, religion, ethnicity, or national origin. Again, this is generally consistent with our current practices, but the language of any federal program is broad, uh, because it's really can anticipate future reporting requirements, and we may have some unintended future consequences. So these sections now deal with the municipal ID sections of the proposed ordinance. Uh, the first sections, uh, establish the program, the purpose, and, uh, its availability. However, it specifically requires that we contract with a local not-for-profit to administer the program. It sets the requirements, uh, and documents necessary to establish identity and residency, and it prohibits retention of documentation or disclosure of information. Now, one question is how this would, uh, the Kansas Open Records Act would apply to this, because that statute says a general rule in the public policy of the state is that all public records shall be open for inspection, and it defines a public record as, as any recorded information maintained, uh, or kept by a public agency. So the general rule is that records are open. It does list, have a laundry list of exceptions. And really, not a lot of those exceptions would apply directly to information obtained during this process. Uh, that's one of the reasons that part of the focus is that the, the unified government not retain any of those records except the information on the card, with the exception of the address. Okay, next. And as Claudia alluded to, establishing a municipal ID program would have a negative budget impact of anywhere between a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, with revenue estimated only to fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year. There's one requirement there that requires the UG to defend lawsuits seeking disclosure of cardholder or applicant information. So if we were to be sued, we would have to defend those at the, at the appropriate cost. And the integrity of the program and acceptance of the ID is dependent upon the level of proof of identity and residency that's required. Many of the, the listed, uh, requirements, uh, in the ordinance are similar to those that are required to obtain a Kansas driver's license or a Kansas identification card. One thing, though, is that, uh, it allows you to use any identification that's up to five years expired. They don't have to be current identification, and you only have to list one of the listed items instead of producing in some, in some cases, more than one, depending on the, uh, on the level. Okay, so when it comes to acceptance, it has to be accepted as proof of identity by all UG agencies, offices, and departments. But it cannot be required to obtain UG services if we don't use any other, for, uh, currently use another, uh, form of ID. So if we don't require something now, we can't require that they present a municipal ID. It imposes a hundred dollar fine for an individual who provides false information in obtaining one, they use it unauthorized, uh, fraudulently, or they copy it or alter it. And there's many sections of the, uh, uh, ordinance which require the unified government to basically actively market, uh, the municipal ID to try to expand the benefits associated with having the ID, to encourage, uh, those eligible to apply, and encourage different businesses and agencies to accept the ID. It, uh, also requires us to provide language assistance to, uh, applicants to facilitate their access in, uh, applying for the ID. And finally, there's a, the, really, the purpose of this is there's a variety of cases throughout the, the country. Some have been filed by the federal government against different cities or counties. Some have been filed by cities and states against the federal government to, uh, eliminate the punitive effect of grant requirements. But these cases, the results have been mixed. Some, uh, federal circuit courts have ruled one way, other federal circuits have ruled another way. There are not any cases in the Tenth Circuit that have been finalized to give us any clear guidance in what the, uh, the litigation posture would be if we were to adopt the municipal ID or adopt the Safe and Welcoming Ordinance. The, uh, so the, really, the question to me is, do we want to be involved in litigation? Because the idea, the uncertainty of it right now is the, uh, the biggest problem. And if there are any questions?
Excuse me, I'm trying to bring up the list of participants, and it's, it's not.
Commissioner Ramirez with the question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, um, Mr. Moore, for the presentation. I just have a couple questions on, um, so throughout the, the, the presentation, you were going section by section or a group of sections, and majority of the time, it seems that they were consistent with current practices. How, if the ordinance, how it's written is already consistent with what we do, and you said, I know you talked about federal grant, um, I can't think of the word, requirements. I, I, other than that, what other implications are there other than our federal grant requirements?
Well, the, uh, the biggest difference, I think, is the sharing of information. And, uh, sharing information with, uh, different, you know, federal agencies is necessary to participate in those fifteen task force, forces that I, uh, listed, and also the, uh, the results of that in combating crime. And there's some, of course, uh, financial impact for those, uh, federal asset forfeitures that are turned back to the Police Department. There are some, I mean, there are some differences, uh, that it would prohibit the, uh, for example, uh, holding someone or giving federal agencies access to someone in custody. And so a lot of that is consistent with our current practices, but that particularly, particular, uh, requirement would require that we treat federal agencies different than we treat other law enforcement agencies. If Overland Park, Kansas is investigating something, and they want to talk to someone we have in custody, we will allow them to do that without having a warrant to do that. If the Kansas Bureau of Investigation is investigating something and wants to question someone who we have in custody, we would allow them to do that without having a judicial warrant to do that. But this would require that if a federal agency wants to do the same thing, uh, that we would require they have a judicial warrant.
Okay, um, my second question is, and it goes to, um, I guess I could have asked this question before, but I didn't know if it would be brought up again. Um, I've, I've done my, I've done my research of looking at other, just as Claudia did, and thank you for that, Claudia, of looking at other municipalities and cities and counties that have, um, the form of a municipal ID in, in some of this ordinance. Um, in some of those cities and counties, it looks like the ACLU, NAACP, organizations like that are helping cover those costs to the similar, what, what this proposal is doing. Have we in any way had conversations with them and how they could help us with this?
Mr. Ryan. I, this is, I can tell you that they have, that has not been suggested. What we were doing was to, first of all, see the sense of the commission, I'm moving this forward, and then, uh, if there would be an opportunity for that, we would certainly pursue it.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I guess I will publicly say that I do support this, the proposal of the Safe and Welcoming of both portions. One, one thing I, I just want to, just for, for, and this is a personal, uh, take on it. Um, I don't share this with the, the Latino community, but one of the words that, that was used, and it's very, it's become a very propaganda word, and it's sanctuary. Uh, my vision or my view of the word is, the word makes it seem like certain groups of people are wanting to be saved. What this ordinance is doing, all it wants is for our community to be more welcoming to everyone. Our, our county is an amazing county. We are one of the most diverse counties in this country. And so I'm, I'm very happy to, uh, support this, and I'm, I hope that as commissioners and as the commission, we can have an open and honest conversation and see how this can make our community that even much greater. Thank you.
Commissioner Markley?
Thanks, Mayor. Am I right in thinking Chief York is listening in? And if so, am I, is he willing to be put on the spot? I'm in particular curious about, um, I know in the case of the Central Avenue crime that occurred here in our community, we had, um, federal authorities' assistance in tracking down the fugitive that, um, allegedly, I'll say, committed those crimes. So I'm curious, in, in light of the language that Ken has discussed with us, how would a situation similar to that one have been impacted if we had had this ordinance in place?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yep.
Yes, we can hear you.
Well, I can tell you this, uh, without the federal government assistance assisting us in that case, you would still be, uh, on the loose and not held responsible for those murders. So, uh, in a cases, you know, similar to this, we rely heavily on our federal partners, which we have done for, you know, fifteen, twenty years. Uh, when it comes to these cases that reach out to other parts of the, uh, metro, other parts of the state, country, we reach out to the, to our, to our partners, and, and they, and they help us, uh, either apprehend the fugitive or help us, uh, in getting it solved.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just, like I said, in, in particular, we, we should have just had this happen in our community, and maybe, um, maybe the larger community doesn't see it as often, because that was such a big case. But I'm sure it happens in more than that case where, um, we are using those resources to, um, you know, we're, we are communicating information and using those resources. And so I do have concerns about how the legal language Ken went over, and I think you can, I can imagine how, um, not fun it was to go through that language and put together that presentation, so I appreciate it. But, um, that language can, can, I can see how it could significantly impact our ability to handle those crimes where we have someone who has, um, gone into another state or another jurisdiction.
Ken, could you go back to the slide that showed Section 3.8?
This one?
I think it's on paragraph eight. That's the slide, quite frankly, that, again, this was the ordinance that was, you know, submitted to us for review and consideration. So it was not modified in any way, uh, but this section, quite frankly, confused me because it seems to allow, uh, sending to receiving information regarding citizenship or, uh, maintaining that information. It seems to be prohibited in some of the earlier sections.
Right, and, um, also, if you could go to the slide that showed, uh, 9, 10, and 11, so that might be the next. So thi- this is what I'm concerned about. So individuals in custody prohibits or restricts allowing, things in the way there, but, uh, such individual or the use of agency's facilities to question or interview such individual that present a valid judicial warrant. But it says, "require notifying such individual before complying with a request from ICE or CBP." But thi- this is someone who's already in custody, assuming. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And so we would have to require them, notify them before complying with a request from ICE or CBP. Okay. That, that just seems odd to me. I'm not sure why it seems odd to me, but, um, I mean, I just don't know enough about, you know, police investigations and so forth to know how this would actually change, uh, that process. Chief York, would you have any comments on this piece?
Uh, so Mayor, what, what actually is your question, so I can make sure I give you the right answer?
So, I mean, if you have an, an individual in custody, and ICE would, uh, want to speak to that person, and they would have to get a judicial warrant, um, does that complicate the investigation? Does it, does it slow down? Does it prevent us from moving rapidly to really get information we might need to, to really, to, to be able to, um, intervene in, in criminal activity? And then requiring that we notify an individual before replying with that request, that change the, the, uh, the, the, the investigation process and, and prosecution criminal activity?
Yeah, Mayor, I think you, you just answered your, your own question absolutely. It would slow everything down, and, uh, to tell the ICE agent that he has to go get a judicial warrant to speak with the person about a, another matter, would again, uh, it would hamper our relationship with, with the federal partners. And, uh, and that, to me, is the biggest deal, because, uh, I, I just can't tell you how many times that we've reached out to our federal partners, and, uh, they've helped us out, and we've have, have had a great working relationship with, with these, with these federal agencies. And I would hate to, uh, I would hate to, uh, hamper that by hav- having these certain restrictions. We would be, they would less, they would be less likely to cooperate with, with our requests as well if we're putting these provisions in place.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, so Commissioner Kane?
Chief, so you wholeheartedly oppose this, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, I do, I don't want to hamper our investigations. I don't want to hurt our relationship with our federal partners. We've, we have federal partners that come to headquarters and have their office here. I mean, we work with all of them, with drugs, violent crime, uh, you name it. We're, we're working with these guys, and, uh, we have been doing so for twenty-plus years. So to answer your question, yes.
Okay, and Kenny? This would cost us a significant amount of money if we did it with with loss in uh grants and stuff like that?
Well, clearly, if we didn't participate in the different task forces, we would lose uh the federal funds that were forfeited, that they would turn over a portion of those to us. I mean, that's, that's very clear. When it comes to different grants, um it does have an effect on those also. Because in order to get some of those grants, we have to provide certifications that we are going to share information. And it doesn't seem appropriate to me to accept a grant and agree to do that and then change your certification and contest basically what you agreed to do. Now, so then you have to look at future grants. Are you going to apply for the grant and then contest whether you have to do that or not or refuse to certify? And see if you get it or not? That's, I mean, one alternative, but but these are the ones that we have that we've received recently or are currently in play. And so our ability to make those certifications for future grant applications would be jeopardized.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson? Darn, it looks like we missed, lost Commissioner Johnson. Okay, Commissioner Philbrook and then Commissioner Johnson will come back on here in a moment.
Um, Kenny, I have a real quick clarification. I just want to make sure I understood you properly. When we talked about having to have a warrant um from th- those two departments, we do not require a warrant from Johnson County, from any of the the little burgs over there, those surrounding us to speak with uh the folks we have in custody. Is that true?
That's my understanding. That's how we treat all law enforcement agencies the same in that regard.
So for us to single out a law enforcement agency would be flying in the face of the DOJ, wouldn't it?
Well, that's where those different certifications come in. And that 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 one section that talked about the federal law that we can't have any agreements regarding that is for that type of information sharing. So yes.
So in other words, we need to treat everybody the same way when it comes to um requests from other municipalities and so on as it deals with police and sheriff and and the state and so on. So is that correct?
As a general rule, yes.
Okay, okay. And so I guess the bottom line is, is how much trouble can we get ourselves in by singling out a cup, you know, a couple of agencies? Not not to cooperate, but make the level of requirements higher than the others. And with that question, I'll stop talking.
Well, I mean, you know, cooperation is obviously mutual. Uh, and as Chief York indicated, if we don't cooperate with different agencies, they won't cooperate with us. So we we lose that that ability. Like that one slide that had the US Marshals Fugitive Task Force, it just gives you an indication of the impact that has by us participating. I think it's one, it's a colorful slide. Yeah, that one there. I mean, you can see the number of cases that uh they handled in two in two thousand nineteen and the gang members arrested, firearm seize, narcotic seize. And we are just one of many agencies involved in that, but again, we're cooperating and participating in that task force. Uh, again, we clearly lose out on the six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars over the last four years that the police department has received in asset forfeitures. And then you have the the grant impact which uh the current grants we have that are ongoing would be jeopardized because we've already signed those certifications. Uh, future grants may be jeopardized.
See, no more hands raised uh from the commission and unfortunately, I think Commissioner Johnson got dropped off the call. So make sure we save time for him. At this time, we're going to uh a lot, give time for a presentation for those, by those advocating for this. And I believe that is Ms. Johnson. I'm sorry, I've got my notes here. Doug, would you help me out here?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't believe I have.
It's Ms. Nadine Johnson.
Okay.
Thank you. At least I got your last name right. All right. Uh, thank you for coming and uh it's yours.
Give me just a second to get her on here.
While we're waiting, Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I was hoping you would see me back on screen here. I'm having major um internet problems here and it's probably knocked me out at least five times during this conversation, but I think I wanted to be on record in saying that I do support uh our endeavors to continue to have conversation about uh student welcoming. I understand and I can appreciate the work that's already been done by staff and by our legal team. To this.
I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, so also I'll try to hurry up and say at least I want to continue to have conversations on this. Uh, we are one of the most diverse counties in the nation, if not the most. And I think as a matter of equity, we need to do all that we can to figure out a way uh to to navigate uh to to dealing with this particular issue. Um, and I know there are financial implications, legal implications. Uh, we not ignore the demographics and the faces of who of what Wyandotte County is. And so I think as a matter of equity, we need to in in looking through all of the various issues. And I'm going to to cease right now because I really want to hear this presentation. I just wanted to get this in before I got cut off again. So hopefully you heard at least the 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 spirit of what I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you all so much. Um, I'm Nadine Johnson. I am the executive director of the ACLU of Kansas. And first, I wish to express my thanks to the Board of Commissioners and to Mayor Alvy in particular for hosting tonight's session. In this challenging time, the fact that you are bringing community together to address the very real and critical concerns that you is most appreciated. Let me have the next slide, please. Thank you. I also wish to thank the Safe and Welcoming Coalition. I'm honored that they have entrusted me to speak on their behalf tonight. Our coalition, as you can see, is a group of city and community organizations. They include Advocates for Immigrants Rights and Reconciliation, the Cross Border Network, El Centro, Grand View Park Presbyterian Church, and Moore Square and Vibrant Health, among others. We represent thousands of Wyco residents who since two thousand seventeen have worked to create a safe and welcoming community. Through years of grassroots work, one thing has become very clear. This community, your constituents, overwhelmingly support the full safe and welcoming ordinance. Next slide, please. So the ordinance consists, as you have heard, of two main components. The first is a municipal ID program with privacy protections, which include the second part, which is an ICE non-compliance agreement, ensuring that unified government resources will not immigration enforcement. If people were to come forward for identification, they need to trust that the unified government will protect them and their data. I'll address this more a little bit later. And next slide, please. Thank you. Um, our current COVID nineteen pandemic has only made the passage of this ordinance more urgent. If nothing else, the virus has taught us something about community, about responsibility, about fairness. The virus doesn't discriminate and neither should we. As the pandemic continues, we cannot afford to have an entire swath for our community afraid to seek testing or treatment. I do want to note here that we recognize and value the efforts of the Public Health Department team. The presentation they gave this evening shows that they are really seeking to ensure that those in the immigrant community are tested. But we're also seeing that there are spikes in the refugee and immigrant population in terms of their exposure to the coronavirus. And we want to ensure that people feel safe coming forward out of the shadows to get care. But of course, the benefits of the ordinance reach far beyond COVID. Yeah, you can go. Thanks. Um, first, everyone in the entire community would benefit from the passage of the ordinance. Second, allowing our neighbors to continue living in fear runs counter to our community values. And third, our economy is strengthened when everyone can participate in day-to-day community life. And finally, this is a pro-law enforcement measure that protects law, local resources and removes any ambiguity about the role of local law enforcement in federal immigration enforcement. I'll expand on each of each of these briefly and along the way, I will share why deepening community trust through passing this ordinance is so important. All Wyandotte County residents would benefit when this, that's, that's fine, you can go ahead, when this ordinance is passed in its entirety. Tens of thousands of of our residents may struggle to access a photo ID. As you saw in the previous slide, conservatively, conservatively speaking, thirty thousand people or about twenty percent of the population may like access to a government-issued photo ID. This group includes those facing housing insecurity, foster children, the elderly, transgender individuals, low-income individuals, re-entering individuals, and immigrants, some of whom may be undocumented. Having access to identification can be life-changing. So why does this benefit everyone? Because all residents would benefit from a safe and welcoming community where people and businesses want to put down roots and grow. These are our foundational values. When our friends and neighbors do not feel safe or welcome, we are not living up to those values. Our economy is strengthened when everyone can sign an apartment lease, pick up prescriptions, open a bank account, or visit their children in school. The Safe and Welcoming Ordinance would give all Wyandotte County residents access to these benefits and much more. And finally, this ordinance does help law enforcement in building relationships with community members and it removes any perceived burdens of federal immigration enforcement duties. It also protects local law enforcement budgets by eliminating duplicative spending on federal immigration enforcement. And that's the best course of action. I do want to take a moment here and address um the question of the um grant funds. Um, as Mr. Moore mentioned, it's true that there is no, there is no current Tenth Circuit decision about this. However, most recently, in the city of Chicago v. Barr, which is the Seventh Circuit, the court held as follows. The city had determined that effective law enforcement requires the cooperation of undocumented residents. Such cooperation cannot be accomplished if those residents fear immigration consequences should they communicate with the police. And local law enforcement must remain independent from federal immigration enforcement. The Burn Grant, which is the same one that Mr. Moore referenced um in his slide, was enacted to support the needs of local law enforcement to help fight crime. But it is being used as a hammer to further a completely different policy of the executive branch. States do not forfeit all autonomy over their own police power merely by accepting federal grants. I will also point out that while the results have been mixed, only one circuit went against the tide here and it was the Second Circuit and it applies applies only to those states. May I have the next slide, please? So why do we need protections? Trust is the foundation of any relationship. Right now, there are people in your community who fear that by interacting with law enforcement, by reporting a crime tip, by acting as a witness, by seeking protection as a victim, they or their loved one may end up in ICE custody. Or they might be mistaken for someone else because they lack official identification. A trusting relationship moves us closer to a community more in line with our stated values. We are a society of laws and they protect people who at any given time may find themselves navigating a difficult immigration system. Immigrants do have rights and our laws specifically reference persons, not only citizens. The privacy portion of the ordinance turns almost completely on trust. In order to have the most effective municipal ID system, people have to be able to trust that their data is not being shared between government and federal, within local government and federal immigration enforcement. Again, all of Wyco wins with the passage of the full ordinance. Next slide, please. In addition to the sixteen groups you mentioned before, an additional twenty Wyandotte organizations also have pledged support for the ordinance. Letters of support are included in the packs that the Safe and Welcoming Coalition has prepared for you. Since two thousand eighteen, more than three thousand residents have signed postcards or written letters endorsing the ordinance and dozens more have canvassed neighborhoods, worked phone banks, and packed public meetings. Next slide, please. This ordinance is about Wyandotte County values. It's compatible with the strategic plan and it enjoys overwhelming community support. For these reasons, we ask that you put the ordinance in its entirety up for a vote. Thank you and I'll take your questions.
Thank you. Um, we just have a few minutes. Thank you for that presentation. We have about five minutes. So unfortunately, I know a lot of folks who have signed up to speak are not going to have an opportunity. What I ask you to do, as I ask commissioners, if you have questions, if you have comments on this, please forward those to your commission, to me. And continue to uh review those things and um, but we have time for a few comments. We will go a little bit past uh six fifty, but we really need to get off so we can be ready to go at seven. Bridget, is there, who is first in line to speak?
First, first in line is Marge Gasnick.
Yes, thank you, Marge. Marge, are you on?
I do not see um her signed in.
Okay, next?
Next will be Garrett Seelinger.
Garrett?
I have Marge on right now. Give me just a second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, hello?
Yes, Marge, please go ahead.
Okay, um, so good evening. My name is Marge Gasnick and I live at thirty-three twenty-two North Fifty-fourth Street. Um, I'm a resident of District One and I've lived in KCK for the past seventeen years. Um, I just want to say very briefly that I support the Safe and Welcoming Ordinance in its entirety. I appreciate you taking the time to have this presentation this evening. Um, and I'm grateful for the research that has been done up to this point. Um, I just ask that you continue this conversation and continue the the research with respect to the uh concerns uh from the law enforcement community. I I just really feel like there needs to be some more um questions and investigating. I'm I'm thinking about these other cities that have municipal ID already and how do they work with this? Um, if they, if they have a um ICE non-compliance provision. So um I just think that the potential benefits that would ripple throughout the community merit that this this discussion continue and I encourage the commission to uh pass the ordinance and make a way, find a way to make it happen. So thank you for your service and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next?
Garrett Seelinger.
Oh.
Yes.
Thank you to the commission for taking this time to address the important legislation we're talking about. My name is Garrett Selinger and I'm the president of the Strawberry Hill Neighborhood Association. When the Safe and Welcoming proposal was first presented to me, I didn't know much about it. Since then, I've learned a lot more and I'm here to support it. We had a neighborhood meeting where we talked about it and there was pretty general support for it. A sense of, yeah, that makes sense. This seems like a good idea. And, you know, I've looked into some of these objections related to federal grant funding being in jeopardy or harming unrelated federal partners. My understanding is that there's no evidence of this being true in in the counties where similar uh legislation has been implemented. I'd hate to see this being used as a reason to not move forward with the legislation when based on the information which, if that was based on the information which is not really backed by any evidence. There's actually a surprising amount of data on the benefits from the American Immigration Council, but I'll just mention two things that appealed to the residents of our neighborhood and a couple of issues we talked about at our meeting. In counties that implemented similar boundaries on unnecessary cooperation with ICE or federal immigration enforcement, employment to population ratio is actually higher. So the employment to population ratio is based on the number of people sixteen years or older who are employed compared to the total uh population of that same age. The employment to total uh employment to population ratio is three point one percent higher in counties with similar policies when compared to all other counties. Crime is lower, and that's the part that we really talked about. On average, thirty-five On average, thirty-five point five fewer crimes committed per ten thousand people. That's the big one. The trust it creates between residents and local law enforcement that actually decreases the number of crimes while increasing the rate of reporting crime, which is exactly what we need.
You have one minute, sir.
We want all of our residents to feel safe enough to report crimes so we can have a safer community for everyone. And that's really at the heart of why I hope the commission will move forward and actually vote in favor of passing this Safe and Welcoming legislation in its entirety. Thank you.
We have time for one more comment from the public and then we have to adjourn.
Sister Teresa Spanker.
Sister Teresa?
I do not see her logged in as an attendee.
Okay, next?
The next person is Angela Martellaro.
Yes, Angela?
I also do not see her logged in as an attendee.
One more try.
Randy Lopez.
Randy?
Hi, Mayor Alvey. Can you hear me? Hi, this is Randy Lopez, Community Resident Wyandotte County, thirty-one fifteen Connor Street, Kansas City, Kansas. I just wanted to share briefly, I know we're short on time. Thank you to the mayor. Thank you to the commission for hearing out the presentations and having conversation about Safe and Welcoming Ordinance. I just wanted to say that I do support Safe and Welcoming Ordinance and I'm grateful for the conversation and thankful for all the community presenters. And hopefully, we can continue this dialogue and learn more about the impacts of, of Safe and Welcoming and how it really truly helps out our community to keep us safe, to keep all of our residents and community members safe. So appreciate your time tonight and thank you, Mayor Alvey, and thank you, Commission.
Thank you, Randy. All right, so we are out of time for this session. And again, I encourage you, if you did not get a chance to talk, I apologize for that. There just seems to be a lot on our plates these days that take a lot of time. But I would please, I recommend that you continue to send your comments, whether questions, support or opposition, please send those on to your commissioner. And so we are now adjourned and we will come back at seven. I think we'll have the UG ready to go, the TV ready to go by seven o'clock. Thank you all.